Good evening, everyone. It is now 6:00 P.M. The June 23rd Special Counsel Meeting will now come forth. Please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic of which this nation and which it serves under God, with its full liberty and justice for all.
Patty, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Frank Banker.
Present.
Councilmember Leslie Notaro.
Here.
Councilmember Lloyd Roberts.
Here.
Councilmember Jody Shirley.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Zabel.
Here.
Vice Mayor Glenn Gunn.
Here.
Mayor Dave Gaddis.
Here.
And City Attorney Randy Mora.
Thank you, Patty. We have two items on the agenda tonight. Both are related to employing a new city manager. Let's get started with item number one. That is, I put the council to review and rank from highest to lowest each of the CAC top five candidates and any individual candidates selected by council members. Begin with, do I have a motion? Motion. Motion by Frank Banker. Do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley? All right, thank you. Originally wanted to have this discussion in a work session, but was advised by our city attorney that because of the subject matter, it was best called a special meeting. I will, however, treat this item as a work session until we have successfully reviewed and ranked the candidates. After we have finished, we will go to the citizens for comments and then return for final comments from the council. Afterwards, we will vote to finalize the ranking. Now let's begin. And before we actually go any deeper into this discussion, I'd like to bring up a letter that was sent to us by the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee. Bear with me while I pull that out. Okay, so Ron had sent us this letter today. It went out to all the council members. It was basically asking us to slow down. We felt like that we were rushing it. And then also made a suggestion that we explored the possibility of hiring a recruiting firm to go through the applications and possibly find other candidates. I'm not sure if that's the best direction for the council, but because it was brought up by the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I wanted to throw it out to the council. And if anyone would like to make a motion to table this and then move to do, to go this direction, I'm open to that. Otherwise, I would say, let's continue moving forward.
I'd like to know that we tabled this in your response.
Okay, well, we have a motion to table. Would anyone like a second?
Seconded.
Seconded by Leslie. Right. Guess we need to take a roll call vote on this one.
Randy?
You'd be best to. I want to be clear just so far. I heard it's a motion to table this. Which item are we tabling?
We are tabling, well, we're voting to whether we table or not.
I just want to make sure this is clear.
This is only rankings, because if it fails, we cannot move to items.
Understood.
I'm not clear. Go ahead. What are we tabling?
Okay, there was a motion to rank, basically just look at the seven candidates that we have. And Mike Zabel made a motion to table. Where we stop, we halt, hold the entire process. So Patty, because it's a motion to table, we can't go any farther until we table vote.
Councilmember Banker.
No.
Councilmember Notaro.
No.
Councilmember Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Shirley.
Um, no.
Councilmember Zabel.
Yes.
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 Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye to the vote.
Mayor Gaddis.
So the motion to table passes. Forward at three. And, uh...
No, no, no. Fail. 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 Fail.
Oh, I got that wrong.
Sorry, I was especially when it slipped.
That's all right. That's all right. Okay, so we continue. All right, so that being said, now we go to a discussion where we begin going through the seven candidates that were submitted by the CAC and the two that were also added by myself and by Glenn Gunn. So the motion was opened by Frank Banker. So, sir, you have a vote.
Well, I believe the vice mayor sent us all a list that he categorized by highest to lowest. I appreciate that. I think the first five, we should really look at. I don't know about another two candidates. I didn't hear about that until just now. So I would know who they were, but that's where I'm at right now.
I have a question. Did you receive the agenda yesterday?
I did not receive the agenda yesterday.
So my mailbox too.
Oh, okay. I didn't get it. I need to go to my mailbox.
It was sent electronically also.
Did anyone else?
I didn't get no letter today either, by the way.
I'm sorry, what?
I didn't get a letter either from the committee that we said the mayor was talking about to table this.
My distribution group is the same. I use the same group for all emails, so I'm not sure why you wouldn't have gotten it.
Okay, I understand. The letter was news to me.
Okay.
Did anyone else not receive today's agenda? How did you know to be here?
I don't, well, because we told you about Monday and you were going to have it. I brought it up on the city website. It said that the meeting was going to start at 11:00 P.M.
Okay, but you did not receive the agenda?
No. I received it, vocalized everything like that. That was last week.
Okay, yeah. This went out yesterday and generally was a special meeting. It goes out the day before. So I'm really not sure. Everybody else didn't see the material yesterday?
Did the letter from the committee chairman go on email today?
Yes, and that goes to the same distribution group.
Yeah.
I can check my email today.
So I'll tell you what. Let's take a five-minute recess so you can go to the mailbox and get the agenda. And what's that? I don't have my key. Okay, well, let's not...
Will it be bad if I show you mine?
As much as your question is directed at the sunshine, there's no issue with you sharing the agenda materials with me. Thank you all. Okay, since Mr. Banker is not quite prepared yet, do we have anyone else that would like to start this conversation? Vice Mayor Gunn.
I'm kind of stymied by this process. We tasked the Citizens Advisory Committee with narrowing down the candidates, but then we gave them these score sheet. How we want this order ranked. So my point is, is that we're not going to allow these guys to develop a rating system of their own. Basically, gave them directions over the morning. Kind of now, down, how it has to be done. And when I go through and I look at the rankings, what I see is a couple things. First of all, upon the conclusion of the Citizens Advisory Committee doing their work, they checked the tabulation of data where their individual reviews are tabulating those numbers and ranked order, and somebody gets to the city clerk. That was it. There was no semi-check of the results. What I mean by that is, if you compare the numbers on Sunday between the individual ranking members there, you see inconsistencies. You see one person rank a 10, and then you see another person rank a zero. And yet, there's no follow-on discussion in those areas to find out, well, what were you thinking? Or what were you considering? To try and resolve the difference and come to a consensus of why they're ranking certain person with certain weights. So that's one inconsistency there. The other inconsistency, and shame on us, because when the straw man ranking sheet was flashed before the council, there was really no follow-on discussion. It goes to my premise that we need to have discussion debate before we come up with a vote. We can't just have something thrown down in front of us, because the typical impression is, let's move on. Here it is. I've given you something. Let's move forward. So when I go back and I look at those score sheets now and I try to attempt to do what I'm supposed to do tonight, to rank order these people, there are redundancies in this worksheet. There are inconsistencies, because you give way too Florida experience. And then right at the bottom, you give the same credits for beach experience or something like that. So in other words, I see certain redundancies in here and things with certain, some twice double count. I have problems with that. There is no consideration in some areas for additional certifications, additional licenses, additional degrees, or additional training that is municipal government-focused. It's just strictly, have you ever worked in an assistant manager administrative job? Or have you been a city administrator or city manager job? There's nothing, there's credit for, hey, you got a bachelor's degree, but there's no consideration of follow-on professional leadership development there. So there are inconsistencies there and shortcomings there that I think makes our job very, very difficult. And I think we need to maybe back up and address some of those issues. One of the things that needs to be noted here, and we've said it before, is this hiring process has not reached epic crisis proportion there. The last hiring process, Lynn Reeves, took nine months. Nine months. And in some ways, that was a benefit, because the person who was acting as interim gave us an opportunity to reserve that person. I had some problems dealing with this thing. And I also have problems, because when we go through these things, we don't have an opportunity to back up and look at all of these people in context. We're not looking at them. We just focus strictly on the grade sheet. And just like I went through and passed out a spreadsheet rank organizing to help make it easy, I've also done another spreadsheet. And again, I'm not giving any direction on anything. All I'm doing is filling in some of the blanks with data to make it easy for people to look at all of the candidates at one time. Look at professional certifications, look at their years of experience in city manager jobs, look at what state they're in, and that sort of thing. So I'm going to pass these around. And I just like people to kind of look at it. And as we deal with some of these things, we can hopefully make our task easier. I don't know if I, I think that kind of sums up my opinion. And based on that opinion, I would like to motion once again that we table this process until we have a chance to reconsider how we want to evaluate these people. Motion to table this grading process until we have the opportunity to consider how we're ranking the individuals' grade.
Okay, we have a motion on the table again to table. Is that valid under Robert's rules after it fails?
Motion to table, a motion can be renewed if it's seconded. My advice to you would be, from a procedural standpoint, that that motion, that motion can, apologies. That motion can be made as new information has been presented conceivably. Typically, a motion to table comes in after there's been a bit more evolution of the discussion. So it may be appropriate to, if the body is inclined to reconsider that position, to do so once each member has had an opportunity to at least preliminarily vocalize where they are and see if that discourse evolves the conversation enough to move that needle. One member speaking typically, you don't renew it at that point, unless there's been more exhaustive discussion. Ultimately, it is the call of the presiding officer as to how that's handled, or the motion maker, if they wish to. But it's not getting seconded if it draws.
Would anyone like to second that motion?
I would like to second that motion.
Like table. Okay, but since there's no discussion, we have to take another vote.
Is our motion that we're doing now?
Motioning to table again. Once a motion to table is made, there's no discussion.
We can discuss anything. Patty, this is...
Once a motion to table is made, you have to halt all discussion and determine whether you're going to vote for it. Patty, we need to do another roll call vote. I'll count that at this time.
Councilmember Banker.
No.
Councilmember Notaro.
No.
Councilmember Roberts.
No.
Councilmember Shirley.
Yes.
Councilmember Zabel.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gunn.
Aye to the vote.
Mayor Gaddis.
Yes.
So the motion passes four to three. And because the first original motion died or is tabled, we cannot move forward with a second. So do I have a motion to adjourn?
Randy, the class we just attended, I thought it was under the impression that in order for somebody to try to renew a motion, that could only be done by somebody who was going to change their vote.
That was on, so we're referencing, now we're pulling out of these rules and towards Robert's rules more generally. What you're talking about is more about a motion for reconsideration of the decision. So, and this isn't necessarily styled as a motion for reconsideration. It's like, we have denied your ability to get a variance, and now we want to revisit the decision to make a variance. The motion reconsideration is different than just being renewed. In that motion to table, it's a procedural motion versus a substantive motion. I will admit, I am learning the technical aspects of this body. Parliamentary procedure is paramount here and has factored in largely into just the first few meetings I'm having here. So I'm doing my level best to make sure that parliamentary procedure is abided by, in the spirit of parliamentary procedure, which is that the will of the majority is heard and abided by. It seems that the will of the majority and right that each member to be heard is occurring, and that's really the core concern of the procedure.
I got a question. Under parliamentary procedure, the first vote is supposed to be clean and untainted. And now that we did another vote after we see how we're imploding, I think it's a tainted vote.
There's not, there's not an element of tainted vote in parliamentary procedure.
What am I just saying?
I understand that people have, it's sort of, I understand the point you're making. It's sort of like you're playing poker, playing Texas Hold'em. Now people have shown you what they've got in store. I understand the notion, but it wasn't the motion, zero discussion, and the motion again, it fails, try again. It was a motion a member discussed. One person may have been persuaded by it. It seems one person was persuaded by the comments made, and the motion succeeded.
Those comments should have been made toward the original motion.
A motion to table doesn't simply have discussion.
I'm talking about for the motion to the agenda.
I understand, sir.
So before we make a motion to adjourn, we have a problem. And we, now we have to have a work session to get back on this and determine what's next. We can't discuss that in this session, because it's a special council meeting and it has a fixed agenda. I had reserved Tuesday to be the backup plan in the event that we were not able to wrap this up tonight. So I think what's going to happen is we're going to have a work session on Tuesday. My question is, is everyone available on Tuesday to come back and work on this?
Just because that's the 28th, I will be available for that?
The 28th, yes.
I will not, because I changed plans to be here tonight.
I understand.
Yes, so I will not be here.
Okay, is there?
Monday before the county meeting.
Well, because it's a work session, we cannot vote on anything. So we can have that discussion, but that's all we'll be doing. Are you okay with that?
On Monday. Which one day are we talking about, Saturday?
I'm sorry, not Monday. It has to be Tuesday.
Tuesday. Should it be 28th?
Yes. Let me make sure I've got that right. Today's the 23rd.
Tuesday, so next week. So Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday. Because I rearranged my schedule this week.
I am out of town Friday.
I would prefer Wednesday, the 29th, or Thursday, the 30th.
What time would it be, between six o'clock?
We could do five or six, whatever, whatever works best for the council. Okay, so then that would be six o'clock.
And Thursday would be maybe, because I don't know.
I mean, I make your voting for those dates and times.
Okay, so I'm good with Tuesday. I'm good with Wednesday. I'm good with Thursday. What's the, how does the council feel? What age is it for?
I vote for Wednesday or Thursday.
I can't do Thursday. And Wednesday's bad.
Wednesday, the 29th.
Wednesday's bad also.
I gave him something tonight to be here. So this is, I'm glad we're not Cardinals and trying to lighten the vote.
Well, it's not easy to get everyone on the same schedule, but we need it for him. So let's just do a shorthand. Two can show on Tuesday. All right? We can show on Wednesday. Two, three, four, five, four. So we have six, so Thursday.
Mayor. Mayor. I have an appointment on Thursday. Would, and of course Kyle can't do it. Would you be okay if we got Victor? There won't be a vote.
Since it's a work session, we could just do it. Let's say it's four.
Okay, great. Thank you.
And Mayor, who will not be here on Thursday? Would you like to call in?
I have something to do with my rankings.
Okay.
I already want to hear that one. Your question.
Okay, well, we will, we will meet on Thursday at six o'clock, and we will continue this conversation and see what's next on the plan. I will remind the council that we did, I know that this was, it seemed like a hasty process, but we all did vote to approve this process of elimination, the pre-survey. We gave it to the Citizens Advisory Committee, and we voted to allow them to do that. And we also said that we would vote to approve the list that they submitted. So here's, here's where we are. And we will talk about it more on Thursday. So, yes, sir.
Just two of all ones. One is, this is a critical decision in this state. And Marshall was right, because the implications of this could last decades.
No, it could. This is an at-will decision.
Hang on a second, please. Let me speak. So I think this is, this is a critical management decision for this council, because the impact of this could last for decades. Second of all, if you want to talk about Robert's Rules of Order, my understanding is that a point of order can be made at any point in, in the proceedings. So if you have a concern, a point to make in the timeline to make your point made is by raising a point of order, not trying to do a discussion after an outcome comes out that you don't like. So that's all I have.
My, my, my severance. Exactly, Mr. Gunn. Okay, you sure ran us the point of order on the first agenda item when you brought this into the council's attention through the vote. Okay? This cannot last for decades. This is an at-will employment. I advise you to go home and read what at-will means. This can be terminated, this position can be terminated at any time. All right? So we're not electing a vote. We're not putting a Supreme Court justice on. We're putting a city manager on, which we have a qualified guy right now, do we? I think this is ridiculous. This is a waste of time. You have all these resumes. I hope you read them. All right? I read a lot of them, okay? One guy outranked a con, all right? The labor board would call him to be a job, jumped. All right? Because he jumps from one job and only stays in the position. I'd like to order, sir. I'd like to stop this discussion for saving for a work session. I will be here.
Point of order is, go ahead, Mr. Roberts.
I would like to just put some positive creation here, because the committee, I think, did a really good job with the one through five. The committee did a good job with the one through five candidates, as Vice Mayor brought out. As some of the lower-ranked candidates, there was a significant delta between the scores. But very quickly, if you look at the number one candidate, that person received all ones and twos. That's pretty tight. The number two ranked, ones, twos, and threes. The number three ranked, ones, threes, and fours. The number four ranked, two, three, six, and seven. And the number five ranked, three, four, and five, and six. That's how they were ranked. So that's very tight. I think Vice Mayor respected the delta between the rankings and the different categories. So I think that was, that was done well. Again, once it got down further, where some of the applications and resumes were a little loose, then the scores started to vary a little bit more. But the top five candidates were pretty dogged on top.
Sir, I'm going to use all these, and I don't want to get into these in session now, because I could give you specifics where we don't see or things over there. And I'm not going to get into that now. Like we said in the course for the Lord of the Church of the Air, we can take it up at the work session.
May I be recognized? And bear in mind that, all right, we've got, we've called this a agenda schedule, and I thoroughly expected to hit a snag somewhere along the process. That does not mean that we can't pick up later or later date and continue moving forward. But because there's four people here and at least one, the Chair of the Citizens Advisory Committee, I think that it's, that was a wise decision to table this, and we need to take this to a work session, dig a little deeper and hit some bullet points and be ready to, to at least discuss and have this conversation. The only question that I have before we take this to a work session, City Manager Mora, you, I'm sorry, City Attorney Mora, you actually suggested that we take this to a special council meeting. And so since we're not voting on anything, we're just trying to discuss our game plan. Does it still require a special council?
And I wish to clarify that advice in as much as it was given. Your code, though I don't have it in front of me at this moment in my reflection, is the distinction between the special meeting and the work session being the ability to take an official axe. As you were talking about ranking people, potentially hat-waunning some citizen input, we're citizens here to inform that decision. You can, that was going to narrow your field of candidates that could be construed. candidates that could be construed as an official act, and I suggested, rather than have some later in time debate on the technical aspects of whether that was an official act, better to just call it a special meeting and take away that concern. If you are truly talking about brainstorming your process, your options, in a way, in a manner that would be ratified at a later meeting, a work session is perfectly, work sessions happen all the time, my concern for you was, if you're moving in the direction of, this is officially what we're going to do, and we're gonna call these two people tomorrow and say they're interviewing, better to call that a special meeting and remove any higher concern about procedural propriety. And as procedural propriety seems to pair up here, my elaborations.
Thank you very much. Do we have any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, or Mike Sabal?
I definitely appreciate Councilman Gunn's chart here. It does clear up some issues for me. I would like to possibly see two things. One, since we put this in the ad and it was a requirement that we have salary in there...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
That we, it was a requirement in the ad that each of the members had to submit a salary number, and I would like to see that addressed for them. And two, I understand Councilman Gunn cannot send it, would it be possible Councilman Gunn sent it to Patty and then she sent it out to the council members? I just like my electronic result.
I initially wanted to put the salary range in there, but everything you see in that matrix comes from the resume. So if there's something that's blank or missing, it's because it's not in the resume. I wanted to put in the salary, and I think I only saw one with a salary.
The top five had salaries, the two additionals did not.
But didn't we list the salary ranges in the ad?
I don't think it went out.
It did not go out?
No.
It's in the job description on the left.
It's something, I mean, I'll bring this up now, it's something I specifically asked for two days ago, and I don't want to overstep myself, I'm brand new here, but I was told the mayor said no to that, that I couldn't ask the city manager staff to contact those two people and ask for their salary ranges. I bring that up because I did a quick web search, and one of them was up around $160,000. Again, it's unofficial, there's no backing behind it, but I, I don't want to overstep myself, again, I'm worried, so I'll sweep that.
And my purpose for relaying that information was, I did not want any potential candidate to be labeled as biased by a table or council member outside of the information that's presented to all of us. And very much agree with you, and that's why I did that.
I have a request. If this is a special meeting for the next one, is there any reason we can't do it in a more collegial format with a horseshoe in it? It seems a little more collegial than it was for a special meeting, than trying to have shouting matches and consequences.
And I think that that'll be fine. We had a special council meeting the other night, and we were in that form, and it worked out fine. So I don't see any reason why not. Patty, you made a note of that? Thank you. All right, do we have any other comments? Okay, well, has to be one of the shortest meetings we've ever had. I, I'm sorry that it, we wasted our time tonight, but maybe it's for a good reason. And with that being said, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion made by Glenn Gunn, do I have a second?
Second.
Jody Shirley, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Frank Baker? All right, this meeting is adjourned.